All right, good evening. Today is Wednesday, October 23rd. This is 6:30 PM. This is the regular meeting of the Olentangy Schools Board of Education. I will call the meeting to order. Ms. Hetfield, please call to roll.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the best part about having a packed house. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
I'll second. Second, please. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, please call to roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have our first presentation item. It's the ODNR, Orange High School Recognition. Jen Dennison from the ODNR and Jessica Timmons from Orange High School.
Who are you laughing at, Mr. Rife?
Hey.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jessica Timmons. I teach science, gosh, I teach children, science, at Olentangy Orange High School. And a couple of years ago, I applied, I just kind of put myself out there and I applied for an opportunity to work with the Ohio Department of Education to evaluate the model curriculum for the environmental science standards, and that's how I met Ms. Dennison here. And we became fast friends and collaborators, and even after the project ended, we still worked together. I ended up getting my Project Wild facilitator certification with Jen. I presented this year one of her conferences. Where was that?
Wild School Site Training.
Oh, the Wild School Site Training, yes, sorry. But to give you a little background on what this project is that we're doing this year, it's a multi-year inquiry-based project. I used a case study from Cornell on the monarch migration and the declining population because last year, if you remember, we planted a pollinator garden on campus and planted 2,000 milkweed seedlings on campus. And the goal was to collect data over long-term. So this year, the students don't know anything about monarchs, and it was really hard for me to like not start the year by talking about them, but the, sorry. The unit is on biodiversity and conservation, so I used the monarchs as just the theme. Students have been evaluating data collected from this case study. They've been working together using a lot of the stuff I learned through the Harvard Project Zero conference that I attended in Pittsburgh. So far, students have gone to Allen Creek State Park and they've done biodiversity essays. They've taken field notes. They've collected data and we've reported that data back to Allen Creek on the health of that ecosystem. They're researching the life cycle and potential causes, and they think they have it down to what it is, but it may not be correct. They're going to actually find out Friday with the last piece of data, and they're writing a lab report based on that. With that, they're also going to be designing a possible solution for our community to see how we can also help bring back the declining population. Monarch butterflies are not endangered yet. They were actually proposed to go on to the endangered species list in 2014, and it has not happened. We don't want it to happen for a couple of reasons. One, it would halt progress because we'd have to do environmental case studies of any area. But what this project was meant to do, and you can see on the picture there, we've been awarded the monarch waystation signs as a site our building is. This was, the real reason was just to empower students because my class can be really depressing sometimes with some of the topics. So I wanted to show kids that we all still can do something, and even small things do matter, as well as to promote environmental stewardship because a lot of my students do graduate and come back and tell me all the things that they've changed about their habits and their lifestyles. So that's really rewarding for me to hear. I'd like to thank Jen Dennison with Ohio Fish and Wildlife. She's awarded our school two grants in the past two years. The Ohio Department of Transportation, I've collaborated with them with the Ohio Pollinator Habitat Initiative. Medallion Country Club, my neighbor is a member there, and he got me in contact with the head greenskeeper, and we've been working together to get them certification with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for Monarchs in the Rough. Mr. Gordon, because he hasn't told me no yet to any of the projects I proposed. Mr. Gill, Roger Gill is our head custodian. He's also been very supportive. Jimmy Loy was our, is our landscaping, our landscaping guy, been really supportive and helpful, especially moving the sod for our pollinator garden, as well as Tron Smith and Josh Battiston because they've just fanned the flames and kind of let me let go of the reins. My kids, my students, and also, we have collaborated with Allen Creek Elementary, Kindergarten, and Preschool where our kids have gone and taught the little minions all about butterfly life cycles. So the current project is in red. Where we planted our, we analyzed soil samples, we amended the soil, and the kids did research on which perennials to plant. So we did that in April and May. Everything looks great. Everything's coming back so far. They've gone to seeds, that's good news. The newest study, we have three islands where there were trees that have died on our parking lot that we are going to use as a site to plant perennials as well as milkweed, and it'll be great because then I have three sections of AP Environmental Science, so every class will have their own island to then basically maintain and collect data on, and then hopefully again for more years to come, we want to get long-term studies going. Here's some pictures of the progress. We also involved our MD unit where kids basically made like little stepping stones with concrete and stuff to decorate the area. We also installed bird feeders that the MD kids could fill once a week. They like to have those jobs to go outside. That was a student, it was her birthday, and she was digging in the dirt and just would not take her sash off, which was fabulous. But it's been great, too, with kids reaching out to me on social media, just telling me how much they have enjoyed, like they come back to school for the senior night for band, and they get to go see what the, they left their mark with this. And then I'm going to let Jen talk about what a wild school site is, and I just took this picture this summer because it worked. We had lots of monarch caterpillars on our property.
Good evening. My name's Jen Dennison, and I'm the Wildlife Education Coordinator for the Ohio Division of Wildlife, and this is actually one of my favorite parts of my job. Wildlife education is important to me because I feel very strongly that everyone should learn more about the wonderful resources we have in Ohio that is our wildlife. And that means more than just reading it from a book, and that means more than just looking things up on the internet. It means going where the wildlife lives and learning in the original classroom, that is the outdoors. And now Jessica Timmons and her students and administrators at Olentangy Orange High School have done just that. They have taken a small piece of land and turned it into a home for wildlife by designing and planting pollinator gardens and over 3,000 milkweed plants around campus. They've created a small but critical patch for pollinator habitat right out their door. And that's what a wild school site is, is creating wildlife habitat on the school grounds so that you can use it in your curriculum. I'm very proud of the work they've accomplished, and I hope you are, too. Just as tireless efforts and enthusiasm has clearly passed on to her students, and I think we're just seeing the beginning of great things from her and her students. And...
You ready?
Sure.
On behalf of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Wildlife, I'd like to present to the students, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and volunteers of Olentangy Orange High School, this certificate and two metal signs designating you as the 185th Wild School Site in the state of Ohio and the 5th in Delaware County. I was going to say, please give them a big round of applause, but thank you. So thank you very much. This has been a pleasure to be here tonight.
Thank you. Good job.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Want to take a picture?
Take a picture, but Ms. Timmons or Jessica?
Mr. Barnes.
Is the reason that my youngest is in Environmental Science and Sustainability double major at Miami of Ohio.
Yay.
And he always looked to Jess as his teacher that really guided him the most, so I'm very happy for that. So thank you for that, Jess.
Come on, Jess, let's go.
Yay.
All right, the next presentation item is, I think, what everyone's here for, is the Student Academic Achievement Awards, National Merit Semifinalists and Commended Students. I think I'll turn it over to Patrick to control the script from here.
Yeah, thank you. I love the energy in the room. We've never had this many people before. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you may have other plans, so we understand. But tonight, we salute the Olentangy students who are outstanding scholars and have achieved recognition in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. A total of 58 students from Olentangy's four high schools earned a commended or semifinalist status as a result of their performance on the 2018 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. That's a lot to say, I can't imagine taking it. After everyone has been recognized, please proceed to the lobby so we can take some group pictures of the students. Thirty-four Olentangy students have qualified as commended students in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Twenty-three of them are here with us this evening. These students are among the approximately 1.6 million high school students across the country who entered the program by taking the PSAT. These students placed among the top 50,000 highest scores nationally. Although commended students do not continue on to the competition for the National Merit Scholarships, many of the students become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. So congratulations to our commended students. As your name is called, if you would please come forward to accept your plaque and have your picture taken with Superintendent Mark Rife and Board President Kevin O'Brien. From Olentangy High School, we have Sean Brown.
Very good. Very good. Any parents who want to take pictures, too, come on. You can wait here.
Ananya Das. And from Orange High School, please congratulate Ethan Chapman. In addition, 24 Olentangy students have qualified as semifinalists in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program, giving them a chance to compete for approximately 7,500 scholarships worth more than $31 million. Nineteen of the semifinalists are here with us this evening. Approximately 16,000 of the 1.6 million high scores qualified as semifinalists. That's quite an accomplishment, and they represent the highest scores of the test. Olentangy students named 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists are, from From Liberty High School, Natish Dashora. From Orange High School, please congratulate Grace Beesold. And from Berlin High School, please congratulate Olivia Davis. Well, congratulations to all these students, their families, and their teachers. Thank you for coming. Please meet in the lobby so that we can get some group pictures.
So I guess we're back in session. Not everyone has left the meeting.
Bang the gavel so Randy stops talking.
Mr. Rife?
What's up?
You're up. Take a podium.
We had to take your award back. It's a very mustard shirt.
I like it.
Our next presentation item is a community survey. Mr. Paul Fallon from Fallon Research and Communication. Paul, if you'd come up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me back. Would anyone have any objections if I did the presentation from here so I can point to some of the subgroup differences?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Might make it a little easier to present. If you understand. By way of introduction, for those who don't know me, I'm Paul Fallon, Fallon Research and Communications. I'm a public opinion researcher and political parlance, what we call a pollster. I work all over the country. In fact, I finished a study in New Hampshire about three weeks ago, which was my 40th U.S. state that I've worked in. But I'm based here in Ohio, and I've been working for this district for quite a while. In fact, Kevin and I were just trying to figure out quite how long. So my work record is better than my memory. I'm going to briefly present some of the results from the survey that was recently completed. There we go. Let me start by talking briefly about the way the data was gathered. The survey was conducted through telephone interviews performed by specially trained opinion research interviewers, that is, they weren't telemarketers, they were trained data gatherers. It was conducted with 303 randomly selected registered voters within the school district. We used a combination of cellphone, voice-over internet protocol, and landline listings. The reason we called people on their cellphones now to interview them is to avoid a coverage error that would be created if we just relied on, say, landline service, since a lot of top schools no longer have that. Three hundred and three interviews, the estimated margin of sampling error was plus or minus 5.62% or 6% with rounding, which just means if we asked, for example, what is your favorite topping on a pizza? Fifty percent of respondents said black olives because of sampling, there are building that number, which means it was 44% to as high as 56%. The interviews were conducted during the period of September 3rd through September 9th, so this is very recent data. And let me mention that the data was stratified, so the differences in vital characteristics such as age, race, gender, and geography are all represented in proportion of the percentages in the electorate. The reason we do that is to prevent under or over sampling from distorting the results. Due to rounding, not all the results went up to 100%, unless otherwise noted, only statistically significant differences will be presented this evening, although in some cases, it's the absence of statistically significant differences that is indeed the story. First and foremost, one of the first questions we asked on the survey was about the right direction, wrong track of the school system. And the reason we start surveys with innocuous questions like this is first and foremost to acclimate response to the survey-taking process because they're very innocuous questions, they're easy for people to answer, and they bolster their confidence and their ability to participate. But it also serves as a social barometer, if you will, to get some sense of how restless or conversely, how content people are. As you can see, at the time of the survey, 76% said the school district is moving in the right direction, 13% say it got off onto the wrong track, 2% volunteered mixed opinions, 9% were unsure. Now, let me give you some idea of what that means. I tell my clients, when I work for a multitude of different types of governmental entities, counties, states, cities, I tell them that ideally, one of the right directions figured to be at or above 60%, and the wrong track figured to be at or below 20%. figured to be at or below 20%. And you exceed both thresholds by leaps and bounds. And let me tell you what else this means. This is my third school board meeting this week, and yesterday I presented results to a district that had 29% right track figure and a 49% wrong track figure. So you don't know how good you've got it. Among parents, that is people who've had children enrolled in the district at the time the survey was taken, 82% said it was moving in the right direction, 11% said it got off under the wrong track. When we asked the same question in 2017, 76% said, 76% said the district was moving in the right direction, and in 2014, 77% said it was moving in the right direction. Very consistent number across the five-year period, which is very good news when you've got such stress-feroc-like high ratings. We also asked, "How would you rate the quality of education being provided by the school district?" As you can see, a total of 88% said excellent or good, 7% said fair, 0% said poor, very poor, and actually, there was one respondent who said poor, but because of rounding, it appears as a zero. Just one. We're going to track it down. 5% of the respondents were unsure. Looking at a couple of subgroup differences, among parents, 92% said excellent or good, among non-parents, 83% said excellent or good. When we asked the same question in 2017, it was 84%, and in 2014, it was 88%. We also asked, "In your opinion, how would you rate the job the district has done preparing students for life after graduation, such as attending college?", 73% said excellent or good, 9% said fair, 3% said poor, very poor, and 15% were unsure. Impressively, when we compared the results among parents and non-parents, there were not statistically significant differences. It means there's an unacceptably high probability that those modest differences between 76% and 72% are to the chance. Am I doing this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'll be careful. In 2017, when we asked the same question, it was 74%. We also asked, "How would you rate the job the Old Tangi Local School District has done spending its money in an effective and responsible manner?", 65% said excellent or good, 17% said fair, 7% said poor, very poor, 11% were unsure. Now, before I talk about the subgroup analysis, I want to talk a little bit about the aggregate data for just a moment. Typically, I tell my clients, you want to be at or above 50% for this particular measure. Now, as you notice, there's a substantial disparity between the results for managing finances and the results for quality of education. That's not unusual. There are a lot of indicators that make it easy for the public to formulate opinions about the quality of education. They see all these award recipients, they hear about scholarships, they read about the graduation rate, the test scores. There aren't those same kinds of test telltale signs for managing finances. So this is a really high and impressive number. And not only does Emily deserve some of the credit for that, but Krista does as well. As the saying goes, "If a tree falls in the forest and there's no one there to hear it, does it really make a sound?" And obviously, you've gotten that message out there, and it's an important one to tell if you've done a good job of communicating it. It's a tough thing to do. We also asked, generally speaking, would you say that pro-- oh, by the way, among parents, it was 77%, but even among non-parents, it was above that 50% threshold, 55%. When we asked the same question in 2017, it was 88%, and when we asked the same question in 2014, it was 81%. Those both numbers are both wrong. Those are the ones from the previous slide. I'll correct that. We also asked, generally speaking, would you say that property owners currently receive a good value from the Old Tangi Local School District for the money they're paying taxes? 74% indicated yes, they do. 17% decided to say no, they don't. 8% were unsure. There was 66% among parents. And when we asked the same question in 2017, 74% responded affirmatively. And when we asked the same question in 2014, 81% responded affirmatively. We also asked, "Over the last few years, do you think that enrollment of students in schools in the Old Tangi Local School District has increased, stayed about the same, or decreased?" A whopping 89% said they believe enrollment has increased. Before I go to all the other results, let me point out, when we asked the same question in 2017, it was 73%, and when we asked the same question in 2014, it was 67%. So awareness of the enrollment increase has cascaded gradually over the course of that five-year period, to where now we're at the point where nine out of 10 members of the voting public are cognizant of the increase. It's nearly universally understood that enrollment is increasing. 7% said they think the enrollment has stayed about the same, 1% says it's decreased, 4% were unsure. A couple of other subgroup differences I want to point out. First and foremost, differences between parents at 92%, non-parents at 86%, were not statistically significant differences, nor were they by age, and that's unusual. And the reason I point that out is that consistency across subgroups is another indication that word is getting out and people are mentally preparing themselves to understand the consequences of growth. We also did some split sample testing, in which we randomly assigned survey respondents to one of two conditions. For example, half were asked, "Would you say that overcrowding of the middle schools in the Old Tangi Local School District is a very big problem, somewhat of a problem, not much of a problem, or not at all?" As you can see, at the time, 14% said it was a very big problem, 37% said it's somewhat of a problem, 15% said not much of a problem, 10% said not a problem at all, and 24% were unsure. So while there's awareness of increasing enrollment, people have not yet formed a consensus about the impact that it's had, how much of a problem it is. In version B, that is, the alternative version, which was asked the other half of the respondents, instead of asking about the middle school, we asked about the elementary schools. And as you can see in this version, 13% said overcrowding of the middle schools is a very big prob-- elementary schools is a very big problem, 49% said it's somewhat of a problem, 10% said it's not much of a problem, 8% said it's not a problem at all, and 19% were unsure. And similarly, as you can see, there's some subgroup differences here as well. Among parents, 18% say that that overcrowding of the elementary schools is a very big problem compared to just 10% of non-parents, but it's still fairly modest. I also want to point out, too, that among middle school parents, that is, people who've just gotten through the elementary schools and presumably are in a position to know best, among them, 21% (1 in 5) know that, think that overcrowding is a very big problem. There's also some statistically significant difference, although a small one, for the 43015 zip code part of the district, as well as Democrats at 28%. And I was curious, I'm not sure it's actionable information, but I was intrigued by it nevertheless. In comparison, looking back at the middle schools, 15% of parents said there was, that overcrowding was a very big problem compared to 11% of non-parents, 19% of middle school parents, 34% of those respondents whose middle school students go to Orange, and 30% among those middle school parents whose children attend Shanahan. We also did another match split sample, where respondents who were asked previously about the middle school overcrowding being somewhat or a very big problem, we also asked, "How much do you think that current middle school classroom overcrowding is hurting the quality of education?" So now, we've gone from looking at prevalence to impact now. As you can see, 9%, just 9%, say it's hurt a lot, 37% say somewhat, 19% say not very much, 13% said not at all, and 23% were unsure. In the alternative version, asking about the elementary school, which was also matched to this previous question about overcrowding in the elementary schools, 8% of pa-- or overall, 12% of parents, or 12% of respondents said classroom overcrowding is hurting the quality of education a lot, 42% said somewhat, 16% said not very much, 12% said not at all, and 18% were unsure. Looking at the subgroup differences, 8% of parents said overcrowding at the elementary schools is hurting a lot compared to 14% of non-parents, 14% of middle school parents, 21% in the 43015 zip code, and just 5% in the 43035 zip code. Looking back at the middle school classrooms, 8% of parents said that overcrowding is hurting the quality of education a lot, which was identical to the 8% for non-parents, it was 6% for middle school parents, but 34% in Orange, around 17% for students in the, whose children are assigned to a Shanahan school.
Oh, is-- sorry, isn't Shanahan have more students than Orange?
Not anymore. We, since redistricting, they're not. We moved some to-- where did we move, Marigny Heights? Shanahan?
Yeah.
Shanahan and Heights are both under 1,000 right now. Berkshire's the middle.
What makes Shanahan feel crowded is the size of the cafeteria. You know, so they feel like it's more crowded because it's small.
Which we renovated.
Yeah, it's still smaller than the others.
We also asked, generally speaking, at this time, do you think it's more important to prevent any increases in taxes, even if class sizes may get larger, or prevent increases in class sizes even though tax, even though taxes may have to be raised for so? So what we're doing is a philosophical juxtaposition. As you can see, and this is a bit misleading, overall, 44% say it's more important to prevent class size increases, 43% say it's more important to prevent tax increases, 4% volunteered mixed opinions, and 9% were unsure. However, if you look at the subgroup differences by looking at the horizontal bar charts on the right-hand side of the screen, it's a different story. Among parents, 49%, a near majority, prefer preventing class size increases, while 49% of non-parents prefer avoiding tax, preventing tax increases. Among 18- to 44-year-olds, 65% in vast majority prefer to prevent class size increases, but 43%, a plurality of respondents, 65 more at the other end of the age spectrum, prefer to prevent tax increases. Likewise, there was also a pretty substantial difference among partisan registrants. And the reason I want to emphasize this is because your approach to perhaps putting something before voters could, to some extent, matter depending on timing. For example, a primary that has a disproportionate turnout because one party's nomination for higher office is more competitive than the others could affect the outcome of a particular ballot issue. As you can see, 54% of Democrats, a statistical majority, prefer to prevent class size increases, but 46% of Republicans, a plurality, nearing a majority, prefer to prevent tax increases. Also, unaffiliated voters, these are people who don't vote in primaries. Keep in mind that you only become a registered partisan in Ohio by voting in and even your March or May primary election at least once in a four-year period. If you don't, you're an unaffiliated voter. That doesn't mean you don't support a particular party. What it means in Ohio is that you just don't vote in primaries. So that's important. These are folks that wouldn't be involved in the May or March elections. And as you can see, 45% plurality prefer preventing class size increases, and 43% prefer preventing tax increases. We also tested some various concepts, if you will. For example, do you support opposed building a new middle school building? 65% of respondents said they support it. 61% of respondents said they support building two new elementary school buildings. 69% said they support funding the upkeep and maintenance of the existing school buildings with a one-mill continuous permanent improvement levy. And 86%, a whopping 86%, said they support funding the construction of the new middle and elementary school buildings with a bond issue that would replace the expiring bonds, so it would not increase the tax rate paid by property owners. That's very good news, because one of the things that this suggests to me, these aggregate results, is that there's some high, fairly high property tax sensitivity. We didn't test in the survey, but I think that's a reasonable inference. By the way, parents are just absolutely exuberant about everything that's going on in the school system, but I wanted to look at non-parents, because they're actually the lion's share of the electorate in the school district. So I just broke the data down to look at the responses, that is, the support to these various ideas among non-parents, and this was a subsample of 160 respondents. And the good news here is that they all get 2 or above the 50% threshold. Among non-parents, 56% support building a new middle school building, 50% support building two new elementary school buildings, 63% support funding the upkeep and maintenance of the existing school building with a one-mill continuous permanent improvement levy, and 81% support funding the construction of the new middle and elementary school buildings with a bond issue that would replace expiring bonds, so it would not increase the tax rate paid by property owners. That's almost bulletproof, frankly. Very briefly, some of the key findings, and this is most important information that I think you should take away from this. First and foremost, the school district continued to enjoy exceptionally high ratings for core performance areas, which presumably have translated into a deep reservoir of trust to make decisions about pressing needs facing the past growing community. 65% for the job managing taxes, that's exceptionally high, it really is. Although education is the marquee aspect of any school district, the impressively high rating for managing finances among non-parents may not be particularly attuned, because another signal of the public's confidence can't be overlooked. Third, while the public was acutely aware of increasing enrollment, it was at loggerheads about the dilemma between larger class sizes or higher taxes, and this appeared to be one of the one area division within the community that was observed in the study. In almost every other instance, for all of the major data points, parents and non-parents were largely like-minded. Next, the community was highly cognizant of growth, but there was only very modest concern about class sizes and their intended effects on the quality of education, which may have resulted in some complacency. Frankly, you may be doing too good a job at managing capacity needs right now. And lastly, despite some ambivalence, there was widespread support for the various solutions that were tested conceptually, even among non-parents, although the actual bond issues may not be quite as well-received in an actual dollar cost or cash, as the survey results imply that maybe a strong undercurrent property tax sensitivity. And lastly, I want to thank you for having me, if for no other reason than this is one of the supreme joys to have in my job. I, for whatever reason, become 911 for a lot of public institutions, a lot of inbounded school districts, and I rarely get to present results like this that are, that herald such good news. So this is, this is a refreshing change it pays for me, especially lately. With that, I'd like to ask a four, oh, four or three questions.
For those people who see, "Oh, well, you only polled 300 people," what, in your professional opinion, what is your response to that? Is that enough?
When I do statewide surveys in Ohio, for today, and I just got done doing one in Washington State, we interviewed 800 respondents. When I do a county-wide survey, typically do about 400 respondents. We could have done more, frankly, but I didn't think it warranted the additional cost in this case.
So, in your professional opinion, this is a--
I think this is more than--
Accurate representation.
Which is just a portion, just a fraction of the county population.
I just want to be able to answer those poo-pooers.
Well, it's consistent with the prior--
Well, yeah, it's consistent with what we've been doing in the past.
Yeah, there are instances where I will suggest to clients that they do additional sampling or oversampling, but I just didn't see the need in this particular instance. There may come a point where that's useful, but right now, I'm not sure I would recommend spending the money.
Very good strategic placement of this on our discussions.
Anything else for Paul?
By the way, I'll correct, there's two erroneous results in that one slide, and I'll send this to Krista in distribution. If anyone's got any questions, feel free to contact me. She's got all of my contact information. Thanks for having me.
Okay, the next agenda item is the Board President Report. A couple of brief comments, and then we got a full agenda. A little bit of reminding of where are we in this, in this journey. So tonight, we will debate different operating leverage scenarios, and then in the first meeting in November, we will vote. So tonight, we take it in, we debate it, we absorb it, we talk about it, and then be prepared to vote at the first meeting in November. Again, I think as Paul mentioned, the current timing would put us on the ballot on March 17th, so the presidential primary in Ohio on March. So that would be probably hotly contested Democratic ticket, Republican ticket, pretty straightforward. pretty straightforward.
Pretty certain who they're.
It's going to be an interesting, interesting time in Ohio and in presidential politics, but that's kind of where we are. So I know Emily did a great job of putting the materials out ahead of time, so we've had some time, are ready to absorb it. We'll talk about it again tonight, but again, debate, discuss tonight, vote in November, and we'll keep the process moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ray for the District Attorney's Report.
Very good. Thank you.
There's far fewer of us.
Strategically placed that presentation while everybody was here.
Yes, while everyone was here.
But, well, since I'm on the record, I'll reserve my comments. I actually, their agenda is fairly, fairly light from my perspective, so all of our, all of my slides, comments are going to be very positive things that are going on in the district related to examples of living our mission. Last weekend was the Columbus Marathon and as Nationwide, obviously, Nationwide Children's Hospital is a major sponsor for that. Two of our students, Bomey and Lizzie, were mile marker champions. So at every mile marker on the course, there's a Nationwide Children's Hospital patient who is the sponsor for that, that mile. And there was two of our students cheered the runners on as they went by. That's, if you've ever seen that in action, it's, it's highly, highly inspirational. So just great to see those two kids out there. As you're well aware, we have just countless activities all throughout the district for community service. Our kids just do a tremendous job, and our staff does a great job of supporting them in those endeavors. So just to quickly highlight two, Tyler Run Elementary School, their Caring Kids Club received the Delaware County Foundation Outstanding Youth Group Award. So there's Jen Maza and Renee Thornton, Mary Walker, and two, two of the students that were there on, on behalf of the entire club. It was a great night, the evening of generosity, so we're very honored to have that group get recognized. And then just another quick highlight, the Roots, Liberty Tree Roots Service Club, they held their spooktacular custom drive. And again, they just come up with a unique idea regardless, whatever the situation is going on all, all throughout the district. So that's just two, two current ones to highlight. I'm, you're well aware, we started our ACT program years ago as a post-high school experience for our students who remain in our school up till the age of 20, 21. That stands for, the ACT stands for the Academy for Community Transition, and they've recently experienced a program called Lifetown, which they go out and practice practical living skills in a supportive environment. And there's a, there's just a big push in, I think statewide, nationwide, about hiring people of different abilities. And I think that this program is certainly preparing our students for that opportunity to, for work in the future. So it's a great job by the ACT program. I'm not sure you're aware, but the Delaware County Special Olympics Program kind of disbanded over the last two years. And we had a group of parents and staff members come together and with the support of Jack and Marty Argonbright and our People's Services Team, and we formed the Olentangie Special Olympics. So we launched that program this last spring with 27 athletes participating in gymnastics and track and field, and now we welcome 16 athletes this time to a, for our unified soccer team. Winner will have swimming, basketball, and cheer. So and that program's open to all of our Special Olympians in the district who are currently beginning at age eight and are current students and to our graduates. So I'm just incredibly proud of the work that's been done on behalf of those students. Just doing a great job. Who's our new, who's our advisor? Taylor, Sharon Taylor has been an advisor for that program. Matt Lattick at Orange High's been hugely instrumental in getting it going. So it's just a great opportunity for our kids. Marching pioneers are all over the place. They went down to Nationwide Children's Hospital last week and played outside, outside the hospital for the patients. Actually, they're going to be down at the Skull Session on Saturday prior to the game. So I guess compliment Dr. Cox and the marching pioneers for all that they do. Just, they're just a tremendous asset to our, to our community. So congratulations to the pioneers. We started our town halls last night, Emily and I, and thanks to Krista and the communications team for organizing these. So we had our first one at Orange Township last night. Not, no, but actually, there was 25 signed up, but only 10, 13, 13 made it out, which was a little small. I think, I can't, it's hard to say whether that's a good thing or not, but it was a good, good meeting, I think, all in all. We had our Business Advisory Council meeting this morning, was really well-attended, kind of revamped that a little bit again and got some new, new faces in the crowd. But we have three more of these planned here to do our, our update. Emily and I have been out and about all throughout the district doing updates to all the staff on what's going on with all of your discussions. So this is just our first phase of the engagement about the upcoming levy, as we'll then start the coffee chat circuit after we get the package finalized. And then just lastly, our important date's coming up. It's our, again, report cards are out this week, the three town halls, and our next board meeting on November 4th, which is a?
Monday.
Monday.
I gotta check the date. I was like, it's gonna be here. We can talk about that.
Okay, we'll talk about that.
Give him his smalls.
Thank you.
I got one item.
I do, too.
Speaking of bands, the Liberty High School marching band is being honored to go to London, England again for their parade for New Year's Eve.
Yes, they have, actually, they're having an event tonight and, oh, tomorrow night.
The Lord, former Lord Mayor of London will be there to make the formal announcement. The bands will play.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, that's going, they're going next June? Is it this June day or next June?
I'm sorry.
This June or next June?
For?
Next June. Next New Year's. Yeah, New Year's, next New Year's.
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you, and I appreciate the new board newsletter that goes out after our meetings. I think that's a wonderful addition to our communication plan, and just wanted to give you a compliment on that.
Wow.
And communications.
Thank you. That was a wonderful idea.
I think it is. Yes, yes.
The next agenda item is the Treasurer's Report, Ms. Hafield.
Of course. So for tonight's presentations, we will have two presentations that we will be sharing with the board. We have the final reading of the October five-year forecast update. Not any changes to the five-year forecast report, but some additional information was requested, so we'll go over that information and address any other questions you might have. Additionally, Mr. Rafe and I will be discussing levy options with you. The information is in your share point, and I believe most folks have printed some information out as well. So we'll walk through some scenario information that we have prepared and further that discussion. And then tonight, on the board agenda for approval, we have our September 2019 financials, appropriation adjustments for fiscal year 20, meeting minutes for September 26th board meeting, and several donations. In terms of our financials, our general property tax increased over our May forecast projections, largely in part to a tax abatement expiration. And so just to remind you, as TIF abatements or other abatements expire, that property valuation comes from our other revenue category up into our real estate category to be taxed at the full rate. And so that was something that we had missed in May. And then an update for the Ohio Department of Education and the House Bill 166 funding. That information will be slated to deliver, be delivered to the district on the October 2019 foundation. So we have been able to pull those reports now and can see what our student well-being funds will look like and what our growth funding looks like. And it's pretty much in line with where our assumptions had been. Again, amended appropriations and board meeting minutes we bring to the board to have approved per Ohio revised code standards. And then for our donations, we are always grateful for the support our community gives us in countless hours of volunteer hours and in kind donations. But tonight, we would like to recognize the following financial donations we've received. We have received just over $11,000 in cleaning supplies from Johnson Paper and Packaging to the Olentangie Schools Custodial Department, and just over $1,900 for bowling coaches from the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters to Olentangie Schools. So we would like to thank those individuals for those donations to our district. Are there any questions I can answer about the Treasurer's Action Items? Thank you.
All right. Do we have any items for public participation?
No, we do not.
All right. We'll roll right into our discussion items, so the second reading of the five-year forecast. Ms. Hafield?
... Liberty is tomorrow night. Yeah. Yes. Just tell them all tomorrow.
Forgive me as I try not to push the clicker into the floor.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we have that presentation ready to go? The second reading of the five-year forecast? No, no worries.
Is it quicker? No, she's got it.
There it goes. Forgive me. So for our second reading of the October update to the forecast, I just wanted to reiterate primarily that we don't have any changes to what we've previously brought to the board for conversation in the first meeting in October. So to take a quick look at where we are, this is a representation of our revenue versus expenditures for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2024, our unreserved fund balances, and our projected days' cash on hand. Typically, what we look at in terms of our next levy item or when we are concerned about our cash unreserved balance is a two-month reserve. Right now, we are projecting that 2021 is above that and 2022 is below that. However, we will also want to make sure that we are looking at the long-term range plan, and we're looking at our capital plans, and we're looking at all of those components in conjunction with each other as we start to talk about our long-term levy planning cycles. One of the major impacts, of course, on the forecast is our enrollment trend. We've had several conversations about the fact that we continue to grow. Our student population and enrollment trend continues to grow by about 500 to 600 students a year. That trend doesn't seem to be slowing down for us, so we want to continue to monitor our facility needs as well as our operating needs and the impact that that enrollment has on that. Again, just to reiterate, we took a look at what our operating needs would be as we added the elementary, the first elementary in fiscal year 2022, and then the potential elementary and middle school in fiscal year 2024, and how that impacts our cash reserves. As you can tell, the 2022 did not swing the balance as much as we might think, but with the bond package, we're also proposing that we sell bonds to purchase the building that we are in. In doing so, we take about $480,000 out of the five-year forecast in need for rent, and so that helps offset that cost of the initial operation for the first elementary school. And then again, the second elementary and middle school impact fiscal year 2024. So some of the supplemental information that was asked at our last presentation was to discuss the difference in collection rates between Class 1 and Class 2. What is that, what is that comprised of for our district? So for Class 1, which again is residential and agricultural land or property, that is significantly the largest portion of our makeup, if you will. That's at about 85%. And our Class 2 or commercial is right around the 15% range. You can see that we have been making some efforts, or you know that we've been making some efforts with our TIF agreements and such to help swing that and shift that. Our actual on fiscal year 2019 is showing that that is actually increasing our commercial property in the community, which is great. Our fiscal year 20 assumptions are based on historical averages. So while it is up slightly over fiscal year 17 and 18, it does stay in that 14% range, but rounds up to 15. And again, we continue to anticipate that that will grow through these efforts. The next question asked was about the utility savings with our House Bill 264 project. What you have before you is the kilowatt per hour by square footage, looking at August to September. So what we tried to do is take a snapshot of one particular moment, one particular month, to make sure that we are comparing the similar timeframe and similar usage, so it's not distorted by whether the air conditioning is running or not, whether the heat's running or not, and making sure that we have the identical timeframe to look at that usage. And this chart shows that our usage is continuing to go down. In fiscal year 26, it was 8.24. It reduced in 2017 slightly to 8.04, and then we have a significant drop in 2008 and 2019 when we were implementing the new controls and the new lighting and some of the other components of the project. In terms of in-depth look at all of the buildings and the projects, Mr. Gordon will be joining us at a future board meeting to really dive deep into all of the analysis that will be available for the House Bill 264. We know that we are entering the guarantee measurement period as of August 2019, and so we know that we have those meters in place to keep these metrics moving forward and compare those to our provider of the controls and systems that were put into place to make sure that we can hold them accountable to that guarantee and talk about any type of refund that may be due. So again, we'll get more in-depth presentation from Mr. Gordon about that at a future date. With that, are there any questions that I can answer for you about the five-year forecast?
I just want to clarify on the utility savings. We were going down. Those are the actuals, or are they broken up by building? Because we've added an entire high school.
Right.
Adding an entire high school, we're still down.
Right.
From 4 to 6. Oh, okay.
Yes. So this is taking a look at the, I believe, so that this is the kilowatt usage in total for the district, broken down by square foot. So even though we've added, Berlin High School came on board in 2019, we're still at a lower usage than we have been in the past. So that's a good metric to share, but I believe that we'll be able to get into more of the building-by-building analysis at a future date.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
So we can roll right into the levy scenarios?
Yes.
Agenda item 10B.
Absolutely. Is the levy scenario presentation ready, please? Thank you. I apologize, and this is totally my fault. I thought in the, in uploading everything to the Board of Education support documents that I had actually emailed them to Dustin and they would be ready, and I just did that shortly before I arrived. So I apologize to Dustin for the confusion, but it was totally my, my error in not forwarding them on to him. So in our discussion tonight, we want to talk about the ballot items that we would, that we are proposing for the March 17th, 2020 electorate. For operating funds, we put together levy scenarios that are modeled using the same type of information that we see in our October five-year forecast that we bring forward for the board. We want to look at our revenue versus expenditure line, our unreserved fund balance, and our days' cash on hand. This model will show and reflect the opening of a new elementary in fiscal year 2022, an additional elementary and middle school in 2021. This model will show and reflect the opening of a new elementary in fiscal year 2022, an additional elementary and middle school in 2024. So the first scenario that we prepared was for 5.9 mils, looking at where we would be in terms of days' cash on hand and months' balance. I added the months' balance to the presentation to kind of give a little more context or make it a little bit easier to understand where we would be one month versus two months versus three months. So with a 5.9 mils, we can see by 2023, we are slightly over two months, and by 2024, we are actually under or right at one-month cash balance. Typically, we would like to see again a two-month cash balance as we end that cycle and prepare to move forward to another levy proposal or ballot item.
So I'm sorry again. One elementary in 2023?
2022.
22. And then two buildings in 2024?
Correct.
Have you looked at spacing those two buildings out?
We have looked at spacing out the middle school and delaying that into 2025. I can show you some slides that we have. If I can real quick to show you the difference. And so if we move the middle school out, as you can see, it doesn't have a large impact in terms of days' cash on hand and months' balance. And so our assumption is that we would like to keep that in the time span, timeframe that is answering the need of the capacity, more so than worrying about delaying it a year because the impact on the operations is not a significant swing. And we have models delaying that, delaying the middle school opening one year for each scenario. I'm happy to go back and forth. It might be a little hard to compare and contrast that way, but maybe it would be easier if we go through all of them and then we can look at it without, if that's okay. The next scenario we prepared was 6.9 mils. At 6.9 mils, we do come up over a single-month estimation for 2024 and a roughly, you know, just about three months in 2023. Our 6.9 mils shows that we are just over three months in 2023 and right at that two-month level in 2024. And typically, we want to look at that two-month cash balance. So this scenario is very, very well suited to meet that need. God bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When we looked at our next scenario, we were looking at 9.5 mils. And why 9.5 versus 8.9 or 9.9? We were really trying to stretch our vision of what we were planning for and what it would take to meet a four-year scenario in looking at where our cash balances would land. So we looked at the 9.5 because it fit that ability to go four years. The 2.9 months' cash balance in 2024 would then extend into 2025, which would put us right at or just above a two. Unfortunately, the modeling that we have doesn't include 2025, but it gives you the idea of being able to extend out that far. The hesitancy with this is, again, our community and the strategy that we have taken in the past is to look at a three-year levy cycle. So we, I feel with this 9.5 that maybe we're pushing it a little too far, too fast, and we want to make sure that we're mindful to not go above and beyond what would get us to a two-month cash balance, especially knowing from the survey that our constituents in our community is concerned about additional taxes as a, and/or relatively close to the classroom capacity.
So what's the cost per 100,000 of like 9.5 versus 7.9?
So the cost per 100,000, I apologize, I didn't make a note. You got it? I'm sorry. That's my fault.
A hundred thousand and nine-five is 332.
Yes, which I believe is right.
So it's a variance of about $56. I mean, every additional mil is $35 on $100,000. So if we use the average of $350,000 as the average home value, every additional mil is roughly another $100.
On 350, 100 on 350.
So you do 35 times three and a half?
Right.
So it's really, sorry, 122.
Right. So then as you're looking at a property valuation that might be higher than that, you just use a different factor.
Every.
Is there a breaking point?
We don't, I mean, we don't, we don't talk about $100,000 value typically because I think we said in 2016, the average home value was 325,000. I think it's safe to assume it's probably closer to 350,000.
Yeah, the cost per 100 is more of a.
Right.
Once you do the math.
Right.
It's however somebody wants to do the math. And it, you know, a mil is $35 because it's 35% of the assessed valuation, so it's $35 on 100,000. So if you have a $400,000 house, you multiply it times four. If you have a 300,000. So if it's, if it's a 6.9 mil levy, it's 6.9 times 35 times the value of your home, the $100,000 value of your home. And we, whenever we do that, we typically have a levy calculator that we allow people to put their price in. Just that, you know, as an example, because we, obviously, we're talking, just from an operating perspective, but Emily's going to talk more about, we still have the PI part of it as another piece of this. So if we add another mil of PI to it, which was what we did in 16, the total package in 16 was 6.9 mils.
Correct.
We also looked at the levy history of what millage rates looked like when we were opening buildings. So what did we pass when we opened three buildings? What did we pass when we opened a high school? You know, in hindsight, it's easy to say, and it's got us, we made a three-year levy promise that got us four years when we opened Berlin High School. And it might have got us five from an operating standpoint, but that 5.9 mil levy may not have been enough because there's that constant compounding because of our growth.
Right.
Right.
You know, we always tend to fall behind a little bit.
And I really want to stress that because if you look at our five-year forecast and you look at the 5.9 mils, which is what we did last time, you think, oh, that could work. We could get three years out of it. But if you look out further, the next time you come back, first of all, and just for clarification, we did this, you're asking for more money sooner. So even though 5.9 looks great today, when you look out.
It makes you ask for more later.
It makes you ask for more sooner.
Sooner, yeah.
So is that fiscally responsible? Right. And our concern again with that is the two schools opening at the end of the forecast. Right? So the timing of that is if we delay, if we stretch that out, not only are you asking more, but you have a, you have that variable of the two schools being opening together, which fits our enrollment needs. It certainly would help our students have less overcrowding, et cetera, but it is a more troublesome planning idea, I think, in that regard. It makes it more difficult to know that we could stretch or sustain another year should we need to.
I just, my fear is that I don't want people to look at the five-year forecast, those people who are savvy enough to do it because we have them, and say, hey, 5.9 should work for you if you're looking at these five years. But when you look out, it does not.
Right.
My only caveat to that is we know that by the time we get to that fifth year, that number will be typically dramatically different.
Yeah.
In the year we get there than what it's in the forecast, right? Because we have this, called this funnel of certainty, that when it's the fifth year of a five-year forecast, there's a lot more variability to that number. By the time we get to that fifth year, we typically narrow that number down fairly well, right? So we're betting a lot on the accuracy of the forecast, which we know has, because it's a long-term forecast, it's a fair amount of variability in it. So I don't want to get too hung up on, I could tell you right now, whatever the 2024 number is, is not what it's going to be when you get to 2024.
Right. I would agree with that.
It'll be dramatically different.
Right.
Typically, anywhere between 10 and 14% different.
We're handcuffed by the state.
I agree.
No doubt.
Because if we could base it off of tax collections, but we can't because you've got the state funding, you're, we're handcuffed by the state to make that fifth year, that fifth-year promise, that to say that fifth year is a sure thing.
Well, and we, you know, to your point with our state funding, we don't know what we don't know. We know from our history that it's not come through for us. It's not come through for our district in a way that is significantly stretching or adding to our revenue so that we can sustain a longer cycle between levies. It's really kind of an unknown, and our history shows us that we can't rely on that. So to your point, Julie, it's very difficult to say that, well, if more state funding comes through, it'll be X. It just doesn't come through. So we have to really take a look at and be mindful of, you know, more, most of our revenue is coming from tax dollars. 6% of our revenue from the state isn't sustainable for our growth. It just isn't.
Hold on a tick.
Yes.
I thought I'd mention for some good background, just to the point that Julie was speaking to, at the last regular meeting in the Finance and Audit Committee, it was a very energetic conversation about the future. And then there was even a special meeting at 7:00 AM, which fortunately you were able to attend, and Mark was able to attend, and I was there. Again, a very energetic conversation about what happens in the future. We don't want to come back in three years and ask for a significant number that wouldn't get through. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Correct. And when we look at our history, our voted history, and what we've been asking our community, in 2015, we passed a 7.9 mil levy, and in 2011, it looks like we had a 7.9, or excuse me, 2008, forgive me. So 2008, it was 7.9, and then in '11, it was 7.9, and then '16, it was 5.9. So that six to eight mil range, again.
It was 5.9 with one.
Yeah, 16 is 6.
Right, so it's a 6.9 ask.
Yes, forgive me, yes. And looking at our operating needs, looking at our growth, looking at our history, knowing that repetitive enrollment growth that we see, the millage models that we are looking at and help us with that sustainability or more in the 6.9 to 7 range.
Do you have the levy history with the number of buildings we opened? So we looked at that.
Yes.
Well, one other thing that's important to note is, as much as, you know, we want two elements in the middle, the operating ask isn't necessarily driven by the opening of the buildings.
Right.
It's driven by the growth.
Correct.
Overall growth.
And the growth facilitates the buildings, but it's not just the building.
Correct.
Okay, so we need to find a way to detach the conversation between opening three buildings and the operating levy, because even if we didn't open a single building, we'd be back for an operating levy.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we need to detach a little bit or create some space between those two arguments.
Right.
Because they're different arguments.
Yeah.
They are. No, the argument is enrollment growth and lack of school funding.
And, you know, when you open a high school, it's a big, it is a big.
Much more significant.
Bigger number.
Correct.
Well, and this board's position is building a strategic argument around that. What you're saying is it's a different, it's a slightly different ask. And it's a, it's going to be a different explanation point for us to the taxpayer. So we'll, we're going to have a lot of fun with that.
And when we consider.
Three buildings.
Right.
You need to operate level, you find three buildings, well, no. We need an operating levy.
Those kids are there whether we open those buildings or not.
Yes, that's exactly right.
You either pack them in existing facilities or create some new capacity.
I think that there's been a level of trust, though, in the history of this board and the district in building to get close to the cliff but not to go over the cliff. And that takes, so to your point of that number in four years is not going to be accurate, but we will do all that can be done, or the board then will do all that can be done to make it.
We'll manage to it.
That's, we'll manage to it.
Well, that's what's always allowed us, that variability has allowed us to stretch a three-year levy into four, a three-year levy into five that we did during the recession. You know, but even with, even with the additional levy and looking at that 7.9 mil scenario, you see revenue over expenditure growing, and it only gets, it only grows worth, and again, that revenue over expenditure is growing because of enrollment growth.
Right. Student population.
More bodies, more staff because of more bodies. And there's really not any planned, you know, it's all just additional teaching staff, additional intervention staff, and all those things that come with that. That's, that is the lion's share of it.
At the Business Advisory Council's meeting this morning, Emily and Mark really stressed that point. Growth, 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 state funding, lack of, lack of, lack of. So that distinction was.
And our ability, our inability to get increased revenue. We don't get increased revenue with, you know, we got a great question at the Town Hall last night, and why don't, why do we need another levy if we've got all this increased building? Doesn't the new building create additional revenue for us? And it does on our inside mills, very small amount, but I'll use the example, if we build 700 homes, that creates about $490,000 of new revenue from the five inside mills. That $490,000, while it sounds like a significant number, funds 44 kids. 700 homes are going to yield 560 kids. It's all about the growth.
Right.
So.
And our growth just in millage, if we consider, you know, the 500 to 600 students that we gain year over year, it's 1.75 to 2 mils every year for those, for those, and for that enrollment growth, just to fund those students. So it's not a surprise, I would say, that we're close to that six to seven mil range in just considering student growth and the impact that those moving into the community have.
Okay, I want to stop you right there. Two mils are needed every year for growth. Multiply by three years, you have six mils.
That was four, though. You're four.
But we're at four years, so. Well, I'm going forward. I'm talking about what you're going to ask. So, okay, so you, so you need six mils just for growth. So 5.9 isn't going to cut it. You need six mils just for growth, and then there's increased costs that we have across the board, which we are able to contain because we spend less than all the other districts. Similar, average, whatever. So then you need, you know, like another mil to two mils to keep up with increased costs. So six mils for growth, one to two for increased costs. That's what you're looking at. So anywhere from six to eight mils is what you're looking at just for operating over a three-year period.
And those operating mills don't take into consideration inflation or anything else.
Or any.
Any.
It's a cap. It's a cap revenue source, so you get what you get.
Yes, it is a cap.
So you may get that fluctuation of Mr. Raish's point about, you know, you'll get a few, you'll get the 700 homes, but you erode it with the kids that we have to educate and gladly educate.
Well, and that assumption is built in, that we do have a revenue growth assumption built, because we do know, we do know we are going to have increased building and increased valuation, and we do have a revenue growth assumption built in the forecast.
Right. It is a part of the forecast and what we take a look at when we put these projections together. But again, it's just, it's not keeping up with the number of students that we're gaining. You know, if anything, I could say that we are a product of our own success. We continue to have high performance, high academic success, students that don't want to move when we have redistricting, excuse me, when we have redistricting occurring, they want to stay, they fight to stay, you know, they're passionate about where they're being educated and the teachers that are in their building. But we have to have a way to fund that growth and continue to keep up, and our state funding doesn't do that. The only mechanism that we have is to pass new millage because House Bill 920 holds what we currently passed flat. So it will not gain on those outside mills. Now, we also know that in our analysis, when you take a look at your millage rates and what we would ask and what gets passed in that first year of collection, it typically collects at that full millage rate. But because of our property valuation and growth, it rolls back to an effective rate, which charges less. back to an effective rate, which charges less to the taxpayers than it does in year one. For example, when we passed the 2016 ballot item, we were rough, just over $1,800 per $100,000 valuation, and we're currently at $1,600, or 1,672. So we know that that valuation continues to increase, and the effective rate pulls down the cost per valuation on our residents.
So I guess, so to that point, if, if we're to go back and look at all the voted millage, compare that to the effective millage, what's the difference?
Effective is 53. I just looked it up, but I can't remember what.
84 point something.
I'm sorry.
Our effective millage right now is, is about where we were in 2012?
Roughly.
So we voted 84 and we're collecting.
53. I just looked on my tax bill today.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's an important data point. Because it shows that, just because you're voting, whatever the number is, 6 to 8, doesn't mean we're going to collect it.
Correct.
Well, the reality is, is that whatever the number ends up being, it's going to take the, to the, the rate on $100,000 back up to where it was after the 2016 levy. And I don't want to say it's almost like, it's really, it's almost like a no-new millage.
Yeah.
Like, it's almost like, but the, but the issue is, is that people's taxes didn't go down because their valuations went up. And again, the only reason their valuations went up is the quality of the school district. I mean, it's, it's a.
Circular.
Yeah, it is, it really is. And it is, you know, and again, it, and as, we've talked in every one of our staff meetings, and every one of the, we're going to talk in every one of the town halls, regardless of, whatever somebody wants to talk about what we spend and nitpick something we're, we're spending money on, it, the levy isn't about any of it. It's about growth and no state funding. It's, it's that simple. You know, the other part of this, as we've talked through this whole package, you know, as we set it up with enrollment growth, and then the need for facilities in elementary, two elementary buildings and a middle school, and then obviously Jeff did his permanent improvement needs, because we can't lose sight of that permanent improvement needs portion of it, so.
Right.
We didn't, we didn't really talk about 9.5.
No.
I mean, I just, yeah, you can ask for 9.5, but is that, and that could maybe get you four years, but is that, again, fiscally responsible? I don't think it's fiscally responsible to ask for 5.9, and then on the flip side, 9.5, I think is asking our voters for too much.
It's, that, that's not consistent with, I, I would argue that in the history of the district, we've, we've typically, at least.
I did a 10.4.
We, we.
In like.
In 2004.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing that again.
Well, that may, that may have been the one time we asked for what we actually need.
I think that's subject to debate, but yeah.
You're probably, no, yeah.
I would argue that that was the one time we actually asked for what we actually needed. And then historically, we've always asked for too little. But that's been the history of what we.
I don't think we've asked for too little.
Well, and you, I guess you're probably right in that we've, because we've always been able to.
Managed to. We've asked for just enough and managed it as efficiently as we can.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, so that's fine.
I disagree. I think we've managed so well that we've gotten used to, like, we've changed the threshold.
Well, we changed the narrative on how you manage that money over time and still provide and show the growth. So I would agree. So we can slice that baloney any way you want to.
I'm surprised by the failing results.
Too much, too little.
That people don't realize that, I mean, I don't know. I can feel, I can feel the growth. I can see it. There's, there's just, I go into the schools, I see no empty space. I mean, the, our, our staff is utilizing everything available to them.
Well, and then the other, we, we do, we capture a lot of economies of scale with our size. We, we do that because we run very big buildings. Our, our middle schools, as you know, I've said, there's five middle schools in the entire greater Central Ohio region that are over 1,000 students, and we have three of them, and next year, there'll be seven, and we'll have five of them.
And they're also top performing.
Correct.
So it's not like size is affecting performance, right?
So Julie, you, you really don't like this one, right?
No, 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 but I think it, you have to show, you, it has to be discussed, because, yeah, that's probably the one that would get us longer off, stay longer off the ballot, but to what expense, you know, is it worth it?
I would say that's, that's inconsistent with what, what we've done in the past of asking for more than we.
And, and, you know, I had Emily look at, at 8.9, you know, just to see, and that really, that's, that doesn't get you anything, you know?
If you drive back to 8.9.
I have a question, if you, if you go, I mean, between 7.9 and 8.9, I don't think there's much of a difference. So then you ask the taxpayer for, for 7.9.
What about voted versus effective? If you have a higher voted and you go longer, it will.
Well, yeah.
It rolls down, and then.
But you hate to break, you hate to guess the effective, because you could get a recession, and then your effective rate.
Then you're just going.
Yeah.
Right, so we have to.
I'd rather go with a smaller number and go back sooner than go with a larger number and go back later.
Well, and if I may.
State funding changes.
No, I think, I think we can make our case on a consistent basis, and we should have no fear of going back to the taxpayer sooner and make our case than go for a big number now and risk not getting them.
And if I may, I think the other part of the conversation with 9.5 is looking at our capital needs and looking at what we are thinking about in terms of permanent improvement, right? Because this 9.5 represents operating only. If we want to, as we know, we have more needs in that capital improvement area. And so we need to think about, if it's a 9.5, what do we ask for, I'm sorry, this is really small, but what do we ask for a PI levy that keeps that millage rate into an item that we feel is appropriate for our voters, or we feel that they would be comfortable with? In this capital needs versus resources, what we did is put together the information that we have about where we've been spending our capital needs and where our resources have been from '16 to 2019, and then 2020 to '24 is projected. The red items are showing what an additional half mil of PI levy, we would anticipate collecting for that. And the blue is highlighting our bond ask. So with that half a mil, we are roughly projecting about 4.2 million, so we would collect half of that in 2020, and then have a full collection added to our one mil that we currently have in place. So this half mil potentially helps us balance that budget of what our capital needs are, along with our bond funds. It helps us budget that out, needs versus resources. So keeping that in mind, half mil to a mil of permanent improvement needs to be looked at in conjunction with where are we with our operating, because that changes the total ballot language ask. Those two pieces are, the PI and the operating are new tax dollars. The capital needs related to the bond are no-new tax millage. So that's why we wanted to also take a look at a 9.5 with half a mil of permanent improvement. Kind of puts us at that 10 mil range. Are we comfortable with that? If we know that our need is half a mil for PI, I think we're in a range that is probably not as successful as if we bring the operating piece down. I will say, when we looked at our bond package, we made a couple of adjustments to the cost. We took into consideration adding that 10% contingency to the cost of the buildings rather than going back and forth and trying to get that number more refined based on market conditions that we know are, are in place, the lack of skilled laborers to perform the construction, and a potential slowdown of the market in general. So that has been factored in. And we also took a look at the priority or the needs for the things such as playground updates, the ADA compliance, those safety items. If we moved those forward to the first issuance, it really only left about $3 million in that initially proposed third issuance. And the $3 million bond sale is not economically wise to do it. It would cost us too much money to just issue $3 million. So we took a look at combining that into a two-issuance timeframe, which allowed the projects to fall as you see before you. It's the same dollar amount with the exception of the contingency, but just broke into two issuances versus three.
So, but the, the total is like 135 million?
Correct.
Which is no additional millage, by the way.
Correct.
So to that point, is it literally 134 rolling off and 134 of new? There's no net-net?
Oh, yeah.
When we split it out into two issuances like this, so it's roughly 40 million rolling off, and then another 93 rolling off, and helping us spend down some of the reserve balance, so to speak, that is in that fund. The Delaware County Auditor, as you may remember, roll, has a rollback on our bond collection. We had been getting about 8 points, I believe it was 8.64, mills in collection, and then last year, they rolled it back to 7.5. These two issuances rolling into, in conjunction with the debt rolling off, maintains that 7.5 effective rate, because we have a chunk of it coming in in 2020, which we have more than $40 million coming off. And then by 2022, adding that $93 million, we can add, we can keep that 7.5 effective rate or close to it, if it all goes.
So how dramatic would this list change if we said, do the PI out of this?
Yep.
What comes off?
I was thinking the same thing.
So in our half a mil of PI ask, if we're looking at, what is that, $2.1 million? The, the hesitation that I have with that is that we don't have a sustained mechanism of resources. It's a one-and-done. So once those funds roll, roll off, or we, we've spent them, we don't have a way to continuously maintain going forward. With this, we are putting those items in the PI package that would have a shorter five-to-10-year lifespan and would need continuous resource in the PI funds, and the items that are longer, more sustainable, 20-to-30-year, and a 30-year bond, which matches up the life cycle a lot more appropriately. The consideration that we have for bond is we want to make sure that we are mindful that this does include interest costs, it does include issuance costs. Could we roll it in? Perhaps, we could probably roll it in for a couple of years, but at some point, then we have built in our capacity to the point where it's too high, and we won't get that future roll-off to add back in.
Because in some respects, we've put things into this that we would have paid for with PI, right?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
We've put things into this, it's this bond package that we would have otherwise paid for with PI.
And, but they're bigger, they are bigger.
Or not done timely.
So as much as it's, it's an annual versus a one-time, I get it, but in some respects, we've, we've put things in here that we would have funded with PI money anyway.
But like, and Jeff, Jeff's here, Jeff's here. So, but Jeff's got a plan, you know, that, you know, in 2028, he's got to replace so many boilers, or whatever, you know? Their expenses, yeah, we're asphalt. I mean, he has it all laid out, you know, so if you, if you put it in, and I, I, I understand what you're saying with the bond package, but if you sell the bonds now, you're, you know, what do you, what do you do in, in, in 2030 when you got to replace those boilers? Whereas if you have a constant flow of, of money coming in off the PI, you've got the money to replace those boilers in 2030. Whereas if you would have put them in here, you've, you've sold the bonds, yeah, you're parking the money, maybe sitting on it, you're not making anything off of it. So I, I, I was understanding what you're saying here, but the more I think about it, because of those long-term replacements, I don't know if I would do that.
We have left things that are more long-term into the bond package and took them out of the PI package, if they were in that, like a boiler or a chiller that's going to last 25 years, or a roof that's going to last 25 years. I do think that's, but we, I don't think it was exact, a great strategy. We used to buy a lot of curriculum out of with bond funds that turns over every five years. Or the, obviously, the technology costs that, I don't think it's prudent to use bond funds for technology.
Yeah, because it's a short.
Yeah.
Buses, buses do have a longer useful life.
They have a 10-year life, right?
So.
I mean, that's probably on the fringe where some of these others are longer terms.
Buses are, yeah, but, but they've just been such a big ticket item. And again, there's so many competing priorities. So, so what we're able to do by moving some of those bigger-ticket items that have a longer shelf life into the bond package, you know, it does enable us to look at a PI. I think Jeff established the case for a mil of PI as being what is long-term necessary. You know, just as an example, Dublin has three mills of PI now. A lot of the older, I think he did that, he looked at Hilliard, and a lot of the old districts that are older than us have higher PI millages.
But they're not building buildings, so they had to put it back into their building to keep them off.
Right. And where we did that in the early stages of all the building, we were using bond residual funds to fund PI and those kind of things.
Yeah.
So, you know, that strategy, obviously, we changed in that strategy. I do think we can, we can manage the PI needs for the next five, five years or so, until whenever that next levy comes with a half mil of PI. So we, I think we can come back off of a mil of PI, because we moved some of these things into this bond package. And then again, keep with our strategy of only asking for what we need when we need it. There'll be another half mil of PI in the future, or another mil, somewhere down the road as the building's continuing to age.
Given what we've done with House Bill 264, the existing PI, this list of things, do we even have the capacity to do more projects? More chillers, more, you know, you got 134 million here, you got a mil, a mil of PI every year, with roofs and chillers and pro, how much more can we do in terms of capacity to get projects done?
But there's also technology in there.
Add to the bond.
Well, what, what do you mean? Technology in terms of buying tons of devices versus building bin.
Well, what's your definition of capacity to do it? I mean, are you talking about what? Implementation?
To get the projects done. We're going to be adding staff to manage projects.
I don't know. Gordon, how many hours of, that you're going to work?
He's going to be building two inches of middle school, plus all these projects. I mean, at some point, how much can you do?
Well, I think we do have it planned out, spaced out.
That's helpful.
I mean, I, I just think, I always, I think back to the last administration, and I think back at those times.
The good old days?
The good old days. When, when, when one or two voices in the community could tip a financial decision where we had to cut so close to the bone that we struggled. And we've done a, a great job of trying over the last six years that I've been here to not think that way anymore. So I'm, I'm not asking, and I'm with you, I'm not, I don't want to take it all, but I want to make sure that we've put ourselves in a position that we've got the best opportunity for this money to do the best good. If Jeff has to delay the start of a project by six months because he doesn't have the capacity to get to it, that's fine. I think the concern would be is that he would at least know that the financing is there to start that six months later, as opposed to saying, now what am I going to do? And, and cut somewhere else. That's my concern.
Right.
And I do have one quick question, is the last time we had this presentation, this building was 4.5 million, now it's 5 million? Did something happen since the last presentation in this one?
We.
Did we get, did the real, do we have to go beat up the real estate people, or what? The landlord?
No. What we were trying to plan for would be improvements that we feel might be needed to the building. As we look around and look at the windows and carpeting and office space and things like that, we wanted to add capacity in that area to do some of the renovations that might be needed. Again, it's, it's an estimation.
It's not a half a mil, but it's half a million that wasn't there last time we talked, but.
Yes, no, I apologize. I should have called that out, and I didn't.
Things creep into things, right?
Well, the, yeah, I mean, this is, we're still working on just a rough draft here, but we're getting closer. But I think, I think those are the kind of things maybe where we could, you know, instead of cutting a line item out that has a longer life, that, that is an investment over time, is we, we might want to think about some of those other things. So that half a million creep may be, you know, great, can you, can you live with the carpet for four years? It's no offense, but.
Sure.
Those are the kind of things.
Understood.
No cappuccino machine for you, Mr. Raish.
We can't have those anyway. They're not compliant with the fire marshal.
That's truly not, but.
No, but I think, you know, the other thing that we want to think about when we look at. when we look at our PI dollars is making sure that we have that resource to handle those situations that come up that aren't planned for, right? Because that's the other thing we've got to look at. I think Mr. Gordon does a phenomenal job of trying to predict, when do we need to replace X, Y, and Z? When are these things going to come offline? When are buses going to need to be replaced? But even the best plans have hiccups. And so as we look at and have a conversation about bonding versus permanent improvement funds, I think it's important for us to understand that that PI is a constant collection and also helps us should something go awry that wasn't in the plan. Because it's a steady resource for us versus bond dollars where once they're gone, they're gone, right? We use them for the project at hand. We manage it as, to the best of our ability, to come in under costs. But when they're used, they're used. And now we're back to the voters to ask for another bond issuance. The difference in philosophy and how we fund that is, I would say, just a newer challenge that we faced. Our district hasn't seen that in the past. We've had brand-new buildings, brand-new facilities. We need new, we need to add to, not necessarily maintain as much.
So I'd add to that, too. Maybe it's a little bit of a stretch, but if you look at the first item, the security vestibles on the buildings, that is a change driven by the world we live in that we had not anticipated years ago.
We didn't have that five years ago.
It wasn't in the 5 or 14?
And so that's, you know, two, a little over $2 million, $2.2 million. So we're approaching a little above a half a mill or at. So, I mean, some of these things are evolutionary pieces we have no control over. But we have, we owe it to the safety of the district and the kids and the families to do something.
Correct. And I would agree that the playground updates are the same type of situation. I mean, we want to make sure that those are safe.
Safe and accessible as much as we can do that.
A quality place for our students that is compliant with ADA and safety regulations, and that helps us get there. Now, that's not something that we probably would have seen five, 10 years ago. But again, it's important to make sure that we get those up, that we are providing that quality to our community.
I just have a real aversion to saying, okay, 7.9 for operating and then another mill for permanent improvement. Because then you're at 8.9. And I, in my head, asking voters for that, I just.
There's the art and science of the ask, right?
Yeah, but a half, I think, is a reasonable ask.
We have now, we're back for half later.
As needed.
As needed, yeah.
Well, it gives us a tighter number to manage to, which is what's been the expectation all along. Or at least that wasn't the good old days.
Some things can't be repeated.
He knew I wasn't letting that one go.
It's always good to have a little.
So maybe I'll ask the fellow board members without asking for anything other than.
Not voting, but we're discussing.
No, I'm not asking for vote. From a discussion standpoint, what is the concern on the ask between one and a half? What do you think that will do? Is it that perception of the number? Or do you think that the general voters will say no?
It's the perception of the whole number.
Total ask.
Okay, so then, so what you're talking about then is what? Are we talking about an eight-five or a 7.9 plus a half?
Mindy and I are doing sidebar conversations.
Ooh, sidebars. I do like a good sidebar. Oh, this, too. I like the discussion.
What do you do with 7.5 and then a .5?
Right.
Because it doesn't really change your month's cash on balance. But you know, you're thinking of going to Macy's in the 1999 versus the $20 shirt. You're going with the 1999.
I always round up, but that's me.
Yeah, no, I'm going with the 1999.
So 7.9 and 8.0 mean no difference to me, but I do not have a degree in marketing.
7.9 plus a .5, which is an 8.4 versus an 8. You want the 8.
Yes.
I mean, a 7.5 is not going to change our day's cash on hand, you know? It's negligible.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to change it, no, based on the.
Yeah, it's not going to make us go back on the ballot any sooner.
What do you think of that perspective?
I think.
Good segue.
Good sidebar, right? Put me on the spot, I love it. I think as we look at the 6.9, I keep flipping back and forth to them. The 6.9 and the 7.9. We are ending 2024 in the difference of about a .6 month, so maybe half a month, right? That's a difference in assumptions within the forecast in terms of impact and where we might actually land. And I believe that the half mill of PI is a reasonable ask, but a needed ask. So if we're looking at our overall package, what looks better? 6.9 with a half a mill or 7.9 with half a mill? Or do we land somewhere in the middle at 7.5 total and a 7 operating and a .5 PI? And it's clean and simple, you know, from a marketing standpoint? I'm very black and white with that.
What's the difference in the ask to the taxpayer?
Average.
If you do 6.9 plus a .5, what's the difference?
At a half a mill, that half a mill difference, if you go from 7.9 plus a half, I'm hearing consensus on the half mill of PI.
I'm not comfortable going forward without dedicated PI because that is a known, those are known costs that we're going to incur.
And I think we're agreeing around a .5.
Yes, .5.
Just for argument's sake. So assuming that, assuming that the half mill of PI is the assumption. So if you go from a 7.9 to a 7 or whatever.
Do a 6.9 and a half a mill.
If you skinny off a half mill of PI or a half mill of operating from the 7.9, a half mill at wherever you take it off on an average home value of $350,000 is $61. So it's $5 on one. So I would agree with your argument. Can we make it work? Or is it, is it really, is it a significant enough number to push somebody over the edge?
I mean, I haven't heard anybody say anything tonight that said we can't make the argument at nearly any of these scenarios, except the big one, the 9.5. That's a tough. So that's, I think that's the question, too, as we think about the strategy of how it goes to market, is can you straight-faced make the argument to get what's needed at those three numbers that we're looking at? At what, 6.9 plus, 7.5 plus, 7.9 plus? Which puts us at 8, and then people can hickey at 8, but.
I said, if it ends up at that, I had already said to somebody, we're going to say it's 8 because of the state.
It's 8 because, so you like the rhyme.
That'll be great on shirts. I'm sure that'll be.
I'm going to mail one of our levy shirts to Governor DeWine.
Make sure it's an extra small.
I think you should.
For small minds.
I do think that's where we're at. It's kind of in this 6 to 8 range with a .5.
Well, and we also have to, but don't lose.
Throw out 5.9.
Oh, yeah.
Take 5.9, take 9.5, throw the extremes out. We're debating over.
But I also think you guys have all, we've provided you drafts of those. Again, and they are widely potential because we've never managed past that five-year window. But we also should be mindful of what it also does.
On the years out.
On the years out. Because that has been a big part of some of our side conversations.
That was an important part of the discussion at the facility.
Yeah, Finance and Audit Committee.
Was the long-term.
You throw out the low, you throw out the high.
What you come back with.
And I'm mindful of that, and I'm also cognizant of those variances that we know will happen also.
Right, I mean, if you go five-year, 10-year forecast, I mean, the variability on the out-years is significant.
Right, I mean, we're very comfortable with the first two years being pretty spot-on in terms of rate assumptions, what we think about the market.
Of our forecasting process.
Right.
It is what it is.
Well, I, every time I talk to, we talk to staff members about any dollar we want to spend, I said, that's, every dollar we spend is $5 in the future. Always be mindful of it. And they understand that.
And on the flip side, every dollar you save.
Correct, is saving $5 in the future. But, you know, the other piece of this, you know, something that's a different strategy that we, in this scenario that we haven't had in the past is we're not, we've already discussed, we're not going to have a published cut list per se. But the reality is, we have to have new money because the variances in our spending, our excess spending over our revenue only continue to get larger. And when, I've already thought about a nuclear option list. And in the out-years of the forecast, the variances in spending get to be $40 million.
And maybe not, obviously, for tonight, but maybe for November, we probably should have a discussion of what if it doesn't pass?
Well, it.
What do those scenarios look like? Right, because I 100% agree with, don't cut this. Let's just go make our case based upon the merits of the case. But I do think we need to be mindful, do some contingency planning, say, okay, if it doesn't go our way, what's that look like?
All, everything that's not mandated by the state comes into play.
Correct.
That's busing, that's extracurriculars, that's your AP classes, that's sports. All of that comes into play because you got to get to $40 million.
Right, right.
And I just, you know, I mean, you jump ahead and I'll be happy to prepare all that for you. But I did a preliminary list of all extracurriculars, all supplementals, all those things. Minimum, state minimum busing, so that's no high school busing and two-mile elementary busing, no gifted, 30 elective positions. Actually, I put at the top of the list, 20 administrative positions. Just pick 20 as a random number. 30 elective positions, all of our growth positions that are in the forecast. So the class size average of 24 goes to 35. I mean, it is what it is, but we have no growth positions. That, just that list right there is 20 million. That doesn't close the gap. The core cost to educate our kids. I mean, there is no nuclear option if we don't get new money. It is what it is.
Well, I think in the last levy campaign and then what this administration has done with strategic planning and other things has pushed out to the public the fact that no matter what you think, this is still a living, breathing business that runs on a budget. And those businesses, the difference is, is your, our master is driven by state statute. You can't go in, you cannot go into the red. You cannot operate the red. That is a no-go. So that's the difference is it's a business that at some point has a button that someone will flip and stop you from doing that. And we've done a great job of not ever getting close to that.
Right.
But it is the reality of that argument that it's nothing personal, everybody. At some point, you have to balance. You cannot step over that line.
The scenario we had before, which was just you said, was that everything goes away except state mandate. That was, that was the backup plan. Because that's all you had.
Right, and you can't control the public perception of that because, you know, if you ask 20 people, 10 of them will say it's a cut list, it's a hit list. I mean, you can't change that. I mean, that's, you just have to do the best you can. And I think we managed that very well the last time.
Well, regardless of what number we end up, we still, we have a great story to tell.
Oh, absolutely. That's the point of all that.
So 8 or 8.4 seems to me that I'm hearing.
I don't think anyone's crossed the 8 line yet.
I don't think that, I don't, I'm still not.
7.4 plus 5.
Yeah, I'm not at 8.4.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I heard 8.4 mentioned.
So is 7.9, is that a number that everyone's not too uptight about? Or what, are we at 6.9 plus a half?
Well, I mean, we keep talking about the numbers, but it's more about what, if you still do a taxpayer, hey, you know, for $60, is it worth security? But people, it's not just that number, it's what the difference is. So, I mean, that's.
So is it 7.5 and 5?
So I think we've got a lot to digest.
There's a fair amount.
And we should absorb everything in this discussion, and we'll come back to it in November. Am I correct? Are we going to vote at the 1st of November? You and I had a discussion about the two had to be done together, correct?
Correct. So what we would bring forth as a resolution in November would be, we would have two votes. We would have a vote to solidify the operating and permanent improvement millage rate. And then the vote for the resolution of necessity, which says that we have the need to sell the debt above the prescribed 9%, which Owen Tangi has done in the last several issuances, just due to our size. So that would be rolled into one resolution and we would fill in the rate. We would leave it blank in the resolution that we publish or put as an exhibit. And we could take the vote for the millage rate, fill it in in the form, and then take the second vote to actually approve that resolution.
What you'll see on the next agenda is a resolution with a bracketed item that will, prior to considering that resolution, will set the number, and then the number will be placed into the motion. Does that make sense? We'll do it in the same night.
Right, yes.
And so what you'll see is a resolution with a blank. But the blank will be decided at that same meeting. And we'll be able to get it all done at the same time. To meet the timelines to get on the ballot in March.
Because we have to vote a second time, right?
Correct.
Later in November.
Correct.
After we get the numbers back from the auditor.
Then it has to be certified, and then we can do it.
Yes. So then at the 20th meeting, it would be the resolution to proceed, which would have that final information that we would need to move forward onto the electoral ballot.
And we need 2/3 majority.
Is it 2/3?
Four out of five.
You need four out of five.
We need a supermajority vote of both pieces.
Four out of five.
Yes.
But it ought to be five.
All right, anything else on this discussion item?
Did I say that on the line?
No. All right, thank you, Ms. Halffield. Thank you, Mr. Rafe. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the board action item. It's to approve the five-year financial forecast as we just discussed.
Second.
Discussion on the five-year forecast. All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Halffield, going to present the treasurer action item, please.
I'd like to present treasurer action items A through B for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Excuse me. Any discussion on the treasurer action items? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Mr. Rafe? The Superintendent Action.
Sir, present Superintendent Action Items A through F for approval, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn our next meeting scheduled for November 4th, but I think that may change, so we can talk about that. I will not be in the country on November 4th.
Well, I have, I cannot change. I have so much stuff going on. What is everyone's fifth?
I'm in Milwaukee. The 5th, I think I'll be back in time.
Roger, where are you? I'm supposed to be in Milwaukee for work from Monday night through Wednesday morning. I can certainly make a plea to the powers that be that I can.
Well, let's, rather try to resolve it tonight.
I can do the 7.
I think that was an out date for somebody, wasn't it?
Me.
You're out on the 7th.
I think it will need four out of five. So I'd prefer to go up here.
I can do the 6. Everybody on the Saturday.
We have, but it was in extraordinary circumstances.
That's concerning.
I don't think we should have this meeting on a weekend when we're going to be voting on a.
I agree.
But Roger's gone.
Hold on, don't, let's not.
I can change my 5th.
I.
If necessary, I can change my 5th.
Was the 6 out? You were out on the 6th? You, you're out on the 6th.
Yeah. I'm trying to see what time my flight is. 8:00 AM. Yeah.
We could also do, I mean, we can do a morning meeting if you want.
I'll be out the 4th, I'll be back the 5th. I think I'll be, the meeting is till 2 o'clock, I think I'll be back here by 5-ish on the 5th, Election Day.
I'll let everyone know.
So let's work on calendars, so I only preface that to say the date may change.
We can invite the whole community to my house.
I can try to dial in, but I don't know if that, I can't.
It doesn't count.
We tried that with Stacy.
We tried that before with Stacy.
I believe that is a no-go in the eyes of the state.
She's moving to Virginia. Go ahead. All right, so I guess we can call the roll. We'll resolve the date.
We didn't vote to adjourn.
I'll.
Oh, sorry, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
In a second, please.
I'll second.
I thought we did, because I had the discussion, but anyways.
No, I think we decided to debate.
We jumped into discussion.
That's okay, I like that.
Now we can call the roll.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.